Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's COHS City Publicity District Board of Education meeting. And I'd like to call it to order at 6:05 PM if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One may as justice under God and do this as well with whatever he has justice for. I think a little call please.
Mrs. Giller.
To be here momentarily.
Mr. Pascal.
Excused.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Dionne. There. Mrs. Carey. There. Mr. Annaly.
Sure, he's not on yet, but he'll be joining us remotely.
And Mr. Nolan.
Here.
With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Newsom.
As always, questions can be emailed or comments to bo me comment at cohos.org. So last Wednesday, we celebrated National School Nurses Day. And here's COHS High School Nurse Sam with senior Jessica Peachey. We're always grateful for everything our nurses do in caring for our students. But certainly, their role in keeping our students healthy and ready to learn has never been more critical than during the COVID pandemic. So thank you, nurses. The second photo is in Mr. Mariello's science class. And students were calculating the speed, acceleration, momentum, and force of hot wheel cars and predicted how they would fare in the crash lab. And in this experiment, two cars were released on a ramp and smashed into each other to see which one went backward. And students compared their results to their predictions. So that sounds fun to me. And then for our final photo, we have an update for our Clink Recycling Challenge that our elementary schools were participating in. They finished second in the entire state, earning a $1,000 bonus prize. So congratulations. So great news are about past 347 to 90. Congratulations to Rick Jackson again and Renee Snyder, our newest board member. And thank you voters. We also, I also want to thank Joanna Valoni for all her work in putting things together before the vote, during the vote, today, after the vote. So tremendous amount of work. So thank you very much. And then also Stacy Mackey, our school business official, who was instrumental in this process. And thanks to Rick Jackson, Nadia Terry, and Matt Nolan, who are budget committee, major budget committee members. It was much a long process this year, and we're very grateful. So thank you, everyone. So a few updates, first of all, of American Rescue Plan. So the process is starting again. We met with teams from all five buildings over the past week and looked at different areas that we, they, they fill out some needs assessments in terms of assessing and accelerating student learning, meeting students' social emotional needs, technology connectivity and access, and also health and safety. The plan is due to state out on July 1st. Stacey's going to talk a little bit more about the rescue monies.
So American Rescue monies, our allocation is just over 5 million. The monies are to be spent starting in the 21 to 22 school year. And currently are through September 30th of '24. That may be extended to June 30, 25, but they haven't till March to decide that. There are minimum requirements as far as spending. At least 20% is required to be spent on every one. Then there are percentage requirements also for summer enrichment and after school enrichment. Again, we met with each building and we met in silos to start, so at each building level. And the plan is to meet in groups next, share out best practices between the schools. And before finalizing the plan, we'll meet one final time and we'll be looking for no more than three volunteers from the board to participate in that meeting. So more to come. One meeting or 14?
One meeting. Like all seven.
So, so some parts of the conversation we've been having is there's a equity requirement where we're looking at, you know, put a wall of mountains among the schools. And then also, we have to, as part of this, talk about, because the monies are over three to potentially four years, how will we be able to either maintain this after funding is gone? Or how these are short-term expenditures that we will then be able to, to show that we've met our, we've met our goals and they no longer need the services. So that's part of the complexity of, of the planning and that's included in the building plans as well. Anything on American, oh, and one thing, Stacy just mentioned summer programming. So that is the one piece that we need to start on prior to having the whole plan put together because summer's coming quickly. So we're kind of pulling that out separately and we'll be sharing that information separately with you. A few other updates, the school climate survey. This is our third year of administering this survey. And we're going to be starting May 24th, giving it to staff, sending it to parents, and then the students in grades five through 12. So as part of the Target School and Target District designation, we are required to give a survey. This is the survey that we've been utilizing over the past few years. I know that there was some discussion about looking at other things in the survey. For example, practices we like to keep in places moving, you know, that we wanted to hear in terms of virtual. In discussing that, we feel we need to move back to like a separate survey when we're assessing our technology needs so that it doesn't change the results of this survey and so that we can continuously look over the last three years. But we'll be sharing this information with our teams at the building level and then also, of course, with the board. And then finally, some more good news. We're able to have a vaccination, vaccination clinic for students ages 12 and up on the Pfizer vaccine, May 27th, and then with a follow-up date three weeks later, where it will either be at COHS High School or COHS Middle School. We're going to put out the survey first to see how many students sign up and then we'll determine. Stacy.
So the spring and summer is audit season. So audits are in progress. And as we speak, our internal controls auditor, Michael Wolf, who received the first day letter, kickoff letter. So he is working remotely to start and helping it onsite for an actual testing piece. So he completes the annual risk assessment for the district and he also will review a focus area. Andrew conducts the annual risk assessment. He will identify a focus area to review. The external auditors, Marvin and company, I actually did attend a webinar today related to GAZV 84, Government Accounting Standards Board. So that's related to changes in accounting for trust and agency funds. This includes scholarships and extra costs. So there are going to be some changes and then how we account for those. Basically, the trust and agency funds are going away. They are completing their preliminary work. So they take a little bit of internal control. It's the first part of their review as well. So they'll be visiting us till June 1st and June 2nd. And then they'll return for the financial audit, August 16th through the 20th. And we just need to keep in mind that our federal funds, any federal funds awarded in excess of $750,000 require a single audit. So that won't be in effect for this school year. The CARES Act was under that threshold, but it will be in effect for the Christmas funding as well as the ARP funding. So both of those funding sources will require a single audit for each of those. And then OSC, so we were randomly selected for tax cap calculation review. So we submitted all that paperwork virtually. And last time we went through this, it was probably about five years ago, five, six years ago. There wasn't a formal report. I'm not sure if they changed the process. I did speak to the auditor a couple of times. They didn't have any questions for me, so I expect I'll hear from them soon. I don't expect any surprises there. And then we did receive the OSC notice this winter that they will be conducting an audit this year. So I do expect to be hearing to plan the engagement and schedule of that. It will be very challenging if it's over the summer because we have the internal auditor and the external auditor there. So that will be extra fun, but hopefully, hopefully we can plan for the fall, but we'll see. I'll let you know as soon as I have an update on that. And then we have taken a look at our year-end forecast. Remedies are in very good shape, which is such a different message than several months ago. Things are up to date and trouble is not an issue right now. So we will have some recommendations for the board for reserves and so the focus will be referring to our line rate plan, the priorities are the retired reserves. So maybe ERS and TRS that we'll focus on.
Just another quick update before we start. We will be meeting with the federal area Boys and Girls Club for planning purposes for our next year's pre-raid, pre-raid plan as well next week. So now we have Jim Stapleton here with us today, our Director of Facilities, and Stacy, who will be providing you with some facility updates.
Okay. Whoever presents the next golf lens with his back.
Please make sure you move along to the right side of the question stuff.
Basically, on behalf of the operations and maintenance, I also would like to thank everybody who loaded budget. Especially Margaret, it's all the ones that voted yes. It's pretty hard in tough times. I recognize that. I know Stacy's been delivering facilities updates, so I'm available as often as you want me to be here. And it's going to be that with the board. So we'll get ready to be through the next slide. So this is slide one, work orders. And I just want to take a second to say that I like the way our work order system is set up. Don't find myself having to decline a whole bunch of work orders. The faculty dosed in office and secretaries and principals submit to work orders. So I think they threw it and only submit repairs any day. So this should be things that we know are going to come during the school year, but not necessarily planned. So. Now, not from there, are we, this report was generated for July 1st and May 18th. There's about 736 work orders completed and that's roughly about 260 working days. So I think the crew general was very hard. There's definitely been an increase in plumbing work orders, and that's probably due to the increased time washing and the. Slide. The completed projects, I think this is probably all news and usual for all this. It is nice to know we got good quality work. That's from everybody who came in on the budget. So if you weren't aware, the Carmine Hill's boiler project, the chemical contractor was TV Galia. And for the middle school, the original contractor was SNL. Some stuff, but good contractors all the way around.
Stacy, that does mean that we'll have some remaining funds in the capital.
So we did some of the final cost reports, SEB, and I actually didn't receive a confirmation of this. So it's very quick turnover. So yeah, about 250,000 in capital reserve towards the.
A general improvement presentation screen. So if some of you want to fuck Mark off, let me know or stop me. So we're on to open positions. And this is probably the negative slide on the presentation. This probably said the biggest negative in my morale at my department. So we're at three left. We got a daily position, second custodian at the high school starting on Monday. And tomorrow, we're going to start a person I started as a sub. We're really hoping we'll transition right into a full-time cleaner. Those that eliminate two of the open positions, which will leave us with two. Still, we need one subs to leave the fight. That's been, that's been a good start for the department. We're going to spring and summer initiatives. So I don't know if you updated the board on the gender, gender neutral science. And I didn't put it on the list, but if you haven't been aware of, there was a law in New York State that any single occupancy bathroom had to be labeled as a gender neutral bathroom. We're looking for guidance, official guidance on it. We ended up purchasing signs that were in line with lawyers throughout our whole district for bathrooms that only had one fixture group. You might want to be, if I see this. And we're able to call the dynamic wheelchair if it was a ADA compliant. It's just says like restroom. After we purchased the signs and had everything installed and after the law went into effect, updated guidance came off the state and essentially you need to have wars, gender neutral or some, some effect. That'll be addressed later on with the capital project, just new signage is needed throughout. The semi-annual asbestos inspections that happens every June, every December will take care of that. It's mostly flooring in schools. The elevators have been inspected. A lot of recommendations came in trying to, so they are inspected. We're going to start that in June. If you'll see stuff on the next board meeting.
Yeah, there'll be a new contract down there.
That goes to safety, speed, safety, if you can. Is that allowable expense?
Also, this stuff on this list is somehow related to safety. The lead and water sampling, we have roughly to the end of June, but we're going to start that in the. We have a lot of fixtures turned off. My intention is to turn them on and flush them. Then we'll set the kind of wire because you can't flush it before you pull the test. We're looking at roughly 400 fixtures for the district community sample. Properly sized for portable and non-portable waters. The biggest part, what I'm telling you guys on that is there's new legislation being proposed. I don't necessarily agree with it, but right now, the threshold is 15 per cent per billion for lead. They're wanting to reduce it to five. And I don't know how many places will pass any of their tests of that thresholds. And I think the, such a low threshold is the intention to try to get it at 10. And they also want to increase the testing every year, which would mean a bunch of increase really. I don't understand most of the legislation that's being proposed with this. But we'll have that. Okay. We routinely inspect our playgrounds. We need mulch. I know we need mulch. Need the employees to put the mulch down or we need the exploring other end. Somebody else come and do it for us. That, that will happen. That's scheduled for June. The athletic fields can't really work the athletic fields until after the athletic season's over. They are in the, the merriving and overseeding. So that all has to happen before the stress, the heat stress from summer comes up. So that will also have to happen in June. The parking lot repairs, not many people. Fortunately, the worst areas that we have, they are recommending just completely starting over, letting it down. The quotes would not be ever. So if I fix it right, no. I have another quote to kind of patch it together. Still very expensive. Basically, it won't last you, you're looking at two years. And then we can try to do it in-house. We know that really won't last. And we don't have the ground power or the equipment to do it, but we can at least make it better. But we can't get to it until summer. So that's the schedule for that. Summer program preparations have started. Is there conditioning needs for the ESY program or specialties right now? They started that and they're servicing the equipment. Principals have figured out what needs are for the individual rooms. Does anybody want to talk about anything on the list? Or is there, for, for paving, is there like a maintenance schedule for, you know, I don't know, every, like, seven years or, I don't know, is there an expected, or is it too random to have some, any sort of schedule to it? I hope you could. It's budget related. Right. Usually, one of the first things cut out of the budget because it's huge dollar amount. Yes. Talk with Stacy and if we ever get our parking lots and roadways back to where they should be, we should definitely get them on a schedule for sealing, you know, striking yearly. We're small enough that if you do two a year, you know, you're staying on. Trouble is, our parking lots, we let go to the point that an attempt was made to seal them. And it may have helped for a year or two, but they were just, it was beyond the point of sealing. It was more like tackling. We're there again. So we'll have to get on a schedule where, you know, the first one would be on the hill circle and that'll indicate why. Dress areas, you know, year by year. It's allowed in the capital projects? Not, I'm not too hopeful that we're going to be able to fix it this year.
Heard a lot about Valley Hippie Way and the travel between there and Carmine Hill. With the paving issues.
We can travel the same route.
So I can say I have a question. I know that you, these are inspections that are scheduled. And is there anything that stands out to you that may come out in these inspections? That might be things that we need to address sooner than later. I know that you said that the mulch, the overseeding and the aerating of the fields, you know, those things are expected that you'd have to do those early. Is there anything else that, as you're prioritizing these things, you would expect anything to come up pretty quickly or?
Everything on this list is what's happened in the next two months.
Gotcha.
It's pretty good. But I said, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, not on the list is the summer cleaning will happen. Then the crews, the maintenance crews also are going to start servicing all the A3 AC. They started and I take them on that except for the air conditioning needs. I pull them off that because I just, that's, there's all different ways you can know about things. I don't service equipment unless it's needed in the spring because the pollen just flies, filters are back. Take them off the tool, we're trying and it's not. So we start to put it, we change belts, but the filters are exhausted.
So like things like the elevator inspections, we don't have anything right now that's not in working order or something that we would expect to have learned to purchase that we would need to make. And, you know, I know inspections were not things that we aren't aware about, but are there things that we are aware about? I guess that's what I'm asking. So.
We definitely recommend a nation, it's all over with. Probably request another quote to see if we can get our apples out of us. Five fingers, but for some of them, change. There's definitely issues that we're not compliant, but so they hit the inspection, but they issued the certificate. So, you know, we have a certificate. Definitely need to be following with the dressing, safety issues.
So are, are any of these items that are known, are they currently in the budget? Or this is just going to be developing?
I wouldn't say they're necessarily budgeted expenses, but that were. Because of the way we went about our budget this year, we didn't spend a lot upfront. So I still have some building repair. My intention is to grab some of it for each other.
Part of the delay is we were going through the RFP process and the intent is to change vendors. And so I'd rather work with the new vendors. So it's kind of a delay in the process.
And the only reason I'm asking is these all seem like very important things and all like the priorities. And, you know, wondering if it's, it's a lot of work for your folks, but I was also wondering, you know, where we were then having included in this budget that's just.
So we'll try to spend that on kids repairs and further your budget as we found for it.
What else? So the next slide, I don't know if it'll show up on there, is just to reiterate the fact that we had to spend kids and classrooms basics for the park. That's the one on the left. And the other two is what we got and other rooms to do that. And that will answer we put back more finding storage area. That's conversations that we started hoping to be able to, as much as that back in classroom as possible. That was that. And the playground inspection slide was basically pitchers don't do it justice, but we need a lot of much. Yes, that's the, I'm leaning towards outsourcing that just because I think they'll stay on our timeline when we repair other things. But if we do it all in-house, I'm confident we can get it all done. It'll just be hard. The project update slide is.
I love that one.
Scheduled for next week to, next step.
The Gemini Partner and the Capital Project Initiative. You know, if you're working on CSR, it's true, they're not our fate for that right here. So they're working on the building condition survey and the five-year facilities plan. I think that's due December, December. So we're currently doing the construction management RFP. We've had 10 firms show interest so far. So that's certainly promising. We do have a walkthrough scheduled for the 25th. So we'll just do a walkthrough of each of the buildings and we're just going to hit areas, high interest areas in each building that were brought us through the building condition survey. Any of the board members are welcome to join us. It starts at Page Avenue with 10:30 on the 25th. I could send you an email so that we have the details. So the walkthrough is the 25th. We anticipate having a contract for July 1st or sometime in July. The pre-referendum planning phase would start this summer and would go through until the actual vote for referendum is anticipated for May 2022. And that's in line with our debt service schedule, financing needs. The pre-referendum planning process would involve the facilities committee with various stakeholders on our committee. And we would revisit the building condition survey and the work that we started about two years ago. We started planning for this initial project. The preliminary, the pre-referendum phase also includes preliminary drawings and estimates. So the construction management firm would work closely with CSR and our many of our stakeholders to identify our priority areas that would be within our budget. The public referendum again would be a year from now. And the design phase would be June 2022 through February 2023. These are all anticipated, you know, there's something to change. But in the design phase, they buy into the drawings and the budget to make sure that they have the best possible, revealing the best possible bank for our book. The construction phase is when SEB would issue our building permits and we would go through the bid process to identify all of our contractors. And obviously, construction would begin and hopefully be completed summer 2025. So again, this is a preliminary timeframe. The timeframe was included in the construction RFP. So again, this is a preliminary timeframe. The timeframe was included in the construction RFP. We'll be meeting with the, the ten firms covering the walkthrough, then we will interview. So once I receive the RFP, we'll review it and we'll assign points based on certain criteria. And then we'll select, say, maybe the top three, but it depends on how many points to send. So we'll schedule interviews probably mid-June. And we'll be looking for some volunteers for the board for that as well. Are there any questions on the timeline or?
The biggest thing that jumps to mind for me is ideally, maybe more so than we have in the past, will have to be kind of a sense of like costs for supplies, especially with where the world is. And they may shift dramatically in the time that we, until we actually start construction. So when we have that design phase, it'll be very important for us to be flexible, to have some choices that we can make between, you know, maybe different options that we would choose completely different, depending on the cost of supplies. Because the return on investment may be there one, you know, six months, not now, but it might be there when we do the design phase. So I think it'll be important for us to have those options on our plate if we can be that flexible. Yes, yeah. So that would be my biggest concern is upfront, we need to try to plan around that volatility that might get us to a better place than we can.
Initially, when we had our discussions with the faculty, the terms, the estimate for this project is around twenty million. That's like to have that figure. And also we have this one hundred and fifty thousand. At the time, we didn't think we'd have lots of little action.
This may seem like a silly question, I still don't know, I think. We, we had talked about having a capital project a couple of years ago, and, you know, the world imploded. But are we using that kind of as our baseline? Or are we not married to everything that was proposed there because?
No, we're not. So we provided that information to CSR. In the preliminary discussions, they did use that when they were. Forming the building condition survey and the five-year plan, so they didn't use that as a starting price. So they know that those were things that we identified as being important to us then. So certainly, they'll be part of the discussion, but we're not married to anything because a lot has changed between now and then. I will say twenty million dollars sounds like a lot of money. It's not a normal project. But it, it doesn't go too far, and there's a lot of need. So we're going to be competing against ourselves for all of the wants. CSR, Dan, speaking with Dan Woodside, as there might be some other avenues. Efficiency, you know, we've done this before, we've done efficiency audits before, but you would like to talk about some ideas for efficiency audits too, so that might be a different. Because there's a lot of goals that are outdated, but would be probably a good efficiency project. So there's, there's some other avenues that we can take a look at and see, but it would be a good segue.
Thank you. I mean, I thought there was a lot of practicality and housekeeping, things that needed to be done. Windows, you know, of course, things that not, not, you wouldn't see a lot of, you know, impact necessarily. But things that are absolutely important that we get done.
Right, absolutely. There's a lot of that, yes. Elevators is one. There's several elevators that. We replaced the whole, the whole year.
So any other questions? I think you two, I want to thank too, because we have been sure, you have been doing everything while.
Cool.
And thank you.
Now, is there any discussion from the board on anything on the agenda?
I, I would like to mention a few things on the agenda. We have three retirements on the agendas this evening. Joanne Walters, elementary teacher at Harmony Hill. Kelly Tessier, a receptionist at those middle school. And Kathy, I'm sorry, Sharon Santoro, the Edumancy Elementary School. They have served for this a number of years. I just want to thank them all and just gratefully them in advance. But also let you all know how very much we love this.
Thank you for saying that. I was going to say something similar, but you played very well, so thank you. I would like to say we did receive a donation from Mirans before, so I'd like to thank them for their donation to the district.
I was going to say, as always, we'd like to thank our folks who have agreed to take some unfair positions this year. It has been a huge help. I know that Mr. You know had posted something about Poets' Day the other day. And, you know, whether people know it or not, all of these folks stepped up this year to give our kids what they could, a, a good experience to get through their, their sports seasons as, as limited as they were, so. And extra curriculars. Now, so this is an extra curricular that we're approving tonight. So thank you to all of our volunteers for everything this year. We really do appreciate that you put yourself out for, for the benefit of our kids.
Thank you, Margaret. In that case, I'll ask for a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
Mrs. Gillard?
Yes.
Mister, Mister Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mister Annaly?
He's excused he had a plumbing emergency, unfortunately.
And Mister Nolan?
Yes. In that case, is there any comment from the board I might go? I, I did want to say for our JSP, we're planning to hopefully have some combination of folks in person. If, you know, working towards that. And so for June second, keep your eyes peeled. If you're interested in coming, joining us, you'll find information on the website. And we'll send it out as we solidify that for you. And then that is the, the date of our JSP, June second at six o'clock. And following that, we have June sixteenth also at six o'clock. And then we'll continue to live through them as well, regardless of if you're able to join us in person or not. We would ask for a motion for the board to enter into executive section at six forty-three to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a particular person.
I'll make a question.
Mrs. Gillard?
Yes.
Mister Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mister Nolan?
Yes. Again, just to reiterate where we started at the beginning, thank you to everyone involved in making the budget for this year. It's a lot of effort, everyone from Stacy, Ed, and the staff at the schools to our, the folks who helped work the election on the day of. It's greatly appreciated. And it was a very difficult year, but we're in a good place to move forward with from here. So thank you, everyone. And have a great day.